We ready? Good evening, this is Harold, zoning chair of the Stratford Zoning Commission that now sits for its regular monthly administrative and public hearing meeting on Wednesday, July the 26th, 2023 at 6:00. The quorum for this meeting is three. Some action requires a four-vote majority, and I will now call on the following elected commissioners. Zone one, Jim Vigliotti.
Here.
Zone two, Dion Francis.
Here.
Zone three, myself, Harold Watson, here. Zone four, Commissioner Lamberty.
Here.
Zone five, Commissioner Petracelli.
Here.
Alternatives who also may be in attendance include Linda Manos.
Here.
We also welcome Jay Habansky, our planning and zoning administrator, Gail DiSilio, our recording secretary, Patricia Sullivan, our zoning legal counsel. Public is free to listen but may speak only at the invitation of the chair during both administrative and public hearings. With that said, I call to order this monthly session of Stratford Zoning Commission at 6:00 PM. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, 5-0. We now move to our public hearing. The first thing, the first and only thing on our agenda tonight is the... Okay, now I've lost it. 432. Oh, here it is. 724...
432.
432.
That's a mark.
Oh, there it is, okay. 432, Honey Spot Road, petition of Otis Nelson seeking special case approval to establish a church with offices in a CA zone. Can you both give your name and your address?
Sure. Good afternoon, my name is Kevin Nelson.
Good evening, my name is Otis Nelson for 435 Honey Spot Road.
And proceed.
Okay, thank you. Once again, good evening, we appreciate this opportunity. Once again, my name is Kevin Nelson, I'm the business manager for the Mount Zion Shiloh Apostolic Church. We're a church that started back in 2011 in Bridgeport, Connecticut. The building was recently sold and we were looking for a new building, found a beautiful building here in Stratford and made that purchase. We came to understand that it needs to be rezoned for religious use, so we submitted that application to do such. As I mentioned, we started back in 2011, we're a small church with about 25 members, trying our best to grow, of course, and we'd like to grow in Stratford. We believe in reaching the community in many areas, not just in the church realm, but with helping, for example, food banks and things of that nature, soup kitchens. And even though we're a small congregation, we have done quite a bit in Bridgeport, hosting events in parks, visiting soup kitchens, as mentioned, and we'd like to expand that with our own building. The building that we had back in Bridgeport was actually rented, so we were limited with the activities we could have done. That being said, we saw this great opportunity to purchase this building and we just want to make sure that we follow all the formalities, if you will, and rezone it as stated by the requirements of the Stratford Commission. We look forward to hearing feedback from you all, we believe that we've dotted our i's and crossed our t's, we've done the best we could, and I'll leave it open to any questions. This is my first time, of course, so I appreciate this opportunity, thank you.
Welcome to Stratford.
I just want to remind you to hand in your sign, and then if you have any revised maps for the commission, you can pass them out.
So we have the sign right here that we did post on our building, as well as a revised map showing a revision to the parking. So we have several copies right here, you can take one each.
One individual, one sheet?
Yes, one sheet each, I'm sorry. So we were in... I was in quite a few discussions with the team here, trying to make sure that we meet the regulations for parking.
You need.
And that being said, I believe we fit the bill. We also spoke to one of our neighbors, our new neighbors, across the street who is willing to assist with additional parking should we require that. Now, our church, we don't have that many services per week, we only have our normal Sunday service, which would be about 12 to 2:00 PM, and we have Bible study and youth activities on Thursday and Friday, which lasts for about an hour and a half each, and we would, we really wouldn't require much parking. As I mentioned, we're a small church of 25, we do have our church van that we use to transport the members as well.
That's what I was going to turn it over.
The applicant has spent quite a bit of time in my office over the last couple days, or a week, I should say, after reading my staff comments regarding the parking, needing some formalized parking to ensure that they comply, or the use complies with the parking calculation, as well as updating the landscaping due to the change of use. So the applicant presented to me today, and I have it here, you all don't have it on your plan, but I have it here, that shows all the additional new green space, and I'm happy to pass it around so you can look at it, all the new green space and the square footages. And then I ran, I double-checked the scale of the spaces, as well as the calculation for coverage, and the applicant is now exceeding the minimum requirement, so they've eliminated that need for a variance when the application originally came in, so we're good with the open space and impervious area requirement. And the applicant also had the required seven and a half, we round that up, that's eight, eight parking spaces that comply with the parking stall requirements of being nine-by-twenty on the lot. So, you know, the parking layout, I'll say it's a little, I mean, it's a little unusual. If you're looking at the parking now, that's what I'm looking at, but it technically does comply with the parking regulation. I'll pass this around in case anyone wants to have a look.
Jay, are these parking?
Those are parking spaces.
Okay.
Correct. Do you see with the x's, I believe?
The rectangles with the x's are the parking.
Those are the compliant nine-by-twenty parking spaces that needed to be provided.
Oh, you did get some green in there.
And so in addition to those parking spaces, it sounds like they have a parking agreement for across the street. You can't take that into, that's incidental to your decision here. You need to make sure that they have the eight parking spaces, and I've verified that they do.
Thank you. Any questions? Might I suggest to you that you, as quick as you can, try to formalize that offer of parking in a legal document, so that in the future you have hopes, you have better hopes of keeping it. I just, in the last year, we've had a church that ran into a similar situation, and they allowed their document to, they didn't keep it up to date, and it became non, no longer legal. Okay. So if you could get someone to commit to parking, ask them to sign for it. Okay.
I have a question. So there's a triangular section of green space between two of the parking spaces, which I think on the original plan was a walkway, you know, to walk from the sidewalk into the building, that now appears to be green space. So I'm just wondering about, you know, access into the building. Are they going to walk on the grass?
I wish I could see what...
Yeah, I'm assuming it's...
I'm going to come over and look too.
Yeah, so it's...
Which one?
Because this is the, I believe this is the entrance to get into the building.
Correct.
So there was like a walkway here, or there was a space for people to walk between the parking spaces to get into the building.
Yep, and so this would be their aisle, this little space in between here, which is a one, two-foot space.
Yeah, it's about two feet, that I calculated.
Okay, thank you.
What is the capacity of, I assume you're going to be having services?
Yes.
How many do you expect?
When you say how many, you mean how many parishioners?
Yeah, how many parishioners for a service?
We have about 25 parishioners, if you throw in a few kids, between 30, 35 at most.
Is that your, are you hoping to expand into this space?
Absolutely, absolutely, that's our goal, but currently, current state, that's what we have right now. A few move away, unfortunately, one of them actually passed away two weeks ago, he was actually our drummer, and he passed away in a car accident, yeah, so we actually just buried him last week, Thursday. So, you know, people come, people go, unfortunately, some go in unfortunate ways, but, yeah.
I'm waiting till they all get a look at it. So Jay, are you, what are you waiting on from them?
They go back. Yes, please. So I am no longer waiting on any items from the applicant, you know, I believe they've satisfied the parking requirement, and they've satisfied, although, you know, it's a little bit unusual, it's an unusual-shaped lot in that it's trapezoidal in nature, but also the building is built, you wouldn't be able to build that building today, so I think that the applicant put, you know, their best effort forward in providing landscaping in literally every square inch, there wasn't a parking space, and to me, that's an improvement when you're providing pervious area to a site that currently, every drop of water goes into the town's storm drain, and we're handling it, so. So currently, I'm not waiting on anything from the applicant. So if you have a service, how many people, like, how many cars usually show up, or, you know?
Well, I mean, I guess it depends on the service, for example, our Bible class, we have much less, we do have our church van, 15-seater, so that's 15 out of the 25, we'd probably have maybe three or so, four, in addition to that. The same goes for Sundays, we actually have a church minivan as well, that carries seven, if you will, so we'd get to, say, maybe eight, we would get to the seven or eight parking spots.
So...
For the service.
For the Sunday service, you'll probably have eight vehicles there.
About that, yeah.
Including your two vans.
Correct.
Yeah, quick question, I know that area pretty well, and I'm glad somebody's doing something positive with that building that's been just sitting there. I think the greenery would make that area look a lot better, and as well as, like Jay said, take some of that water from coming off onto our sewer systems and actually into the soil. But I know that across the street, you said you're going to utilize their parking, correct?
Yeah, if needed.
And it's gated, I think, if I remember correctly.
Across the street?
In the back.
In the back, it is.
So how many parking spots are back there?
I want to say eight, seven or eight.
Yeah, I don't remember back there, I can't picture, I haven't seen back there in a while, but I know it's gated.
Sure.
So that's a positive also, positive.
Yeah.
So it's about eight also, so you'll have extra eight parking if needed.
If ever needed, but we don't want to take advantage of that to say, oh, hey, well, we could just park over there, you know?
Right, right, courteous to your neighbors, of course.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Well, that would get you close to 35 people if you had 16 spots.
Yeah.
So that should be your hope if you're really growing.
Absolutely.
Anybody else? Len? Deborah? Jim?
Mr. Habansky, did I hear you correctly that they are over on the requirement for the impervious?
That's correct, the minimum requirement is 20%, and the applicant has provided 20.1%. So...
Okay, so there's no, it doesn't sound like there's a lot of space to maybe widen that walk, like, so reduce the size of that triangular piece to give a wider walkway to access the building? Because if they're going to have eight vehicles at a service, you know, they're not going to have a lot of space for people to...
So they have, the applicant has literally maxed out almost every square inch other than having to remove the ADA access to the side of the building, which I would be more concerned about losing that, and, you know, the applicant may have to, you know, revise what is the main entrance, you know, maybe what appears to be the main entrance, you know, as you go to the site, the main entrance naturally, at least for me, wants to be on Sedgwick, but, you know, maybe the main entrance is now the entrance that comes in off Honey Spot Road that runs along the backside of the building, where there's that ADA ramp, They may be able to squeeze it in somewhere else, widen that and add in a bit more landscaping, and I don't know where.
Well, on the Sedgwick side, they could shift that one car that's on the obtuse angle, couldn't they? If they wanted to put a door in the center of the...
They might, they might. So I think if there's a condition that the commission is considering, it's, you know, to widen the walkway to a minimum of three feet along Sedgwick between parking stalls to access the side entrance, the entrance on Sedgwick, they probably could figure out, they could add some additional landscaping along where you see it here, they could push it just right up to the line and probably gain it.
Well, you know, thank you for reminding me about the access on the ramp, with the ramp off of Honey Spot. So at least to me, it seems like there's unimpeded access into the building.
This concrete ramp is an ADA ramp?
Yes.
And that comes down to, almost all the way down to Honey Spot, correct?
Correct. And look, this will have to comply, when they get their building permit, this will have to comply with a new church being built from scratch today, it's going to have to meet fire code and building code and ADA access and ADA bathrooms and all that additional code requirement.
Okay, but currently, the main entrance is on the bottom of your map here? It's at the top of the ramp?
The current main entrance is on Sedgwick.
It's on the Sedgwick side?
Yeah, that's the current main.
Okay. On the opposite side of the Sedgwick side, is that, is that a suitable entrance? If you could just use the ramp as your main entrance?
There is a driveway there that might hamper with that a bit, however, the landing and the stairway itself on the side of Sedgwick, if we were to narrow it a little bit, it's pretty wide, so if we were to narrow it a little bit, I think it would still be compliant and also satisfy the additional greenery as Mr. Vigliotti, I hope I didn't say your name wrong, stated.
Anything we did not cover, Jay? Any other questions?
I just believe that, I don't want to compromise them under ADA complacency, because that's not up to us.
Right.
So I don't want to do anything extreme to them now, which, when they're already compliant...
Yes.
...with everything, actually 0.1% over the threshold of which is needed, so I don't want to do undue stress on them once they have to go through the ADA complacency when, you know, once they get to that point.
And you both understand really well, I'm sure, now that this is a...
I know this site.
Yes. This will take you, you'll know a whole lot more when you get to the other side.
Well, I'm sure.
Okay. Do you have any final comments, would you?
I appreciate you all listening, we did our 110% best trying to become compliant, and as I mentioned, we want to do something good in the city of Stratford, and I think we'll do really well. We're a small number of people, but I think there's strength in numbers, even if it's small numbers, so, once again, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We wish you our best.
Thank you.
Let me ask in the audience, is there anybody here who would like to speak in opposition to this project?
Yes.
Is there anybody here who would like to speak in favor of this project? Is there anybody who would like to speak about this project in any way? One last time? Hearing none? I will accept a motion.
A motion to close the public hearing?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
5-0. Thank you.
Can I bring something to your attention? Correct the agenda from 432 to 435, Honey Spot Road. Jay, do you want please?
We just did, I thought. If you're here tonight, we are not having a hearing on the Silver Lane property, that has been moved to the 23rd of August, and also the 724 Honey Spot Road is also not being heard tonight, they're still working on getting some of their other approvals, that probably will be heard also on the 23rd, sorry, hopefully they'll have everything ready by then. If you're, well, okay, I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0.
Oh.
Dion, oh, Jim did. Okay, we're now going to move to the administrative portion. Someone want to move to open our administrative hearing? We don't need it? Okay, our administrative hearing is here, declared open. Now, we're going to go, well, let me find the right page then, because I have this page. That's next, last week, isn't it? Yeah, that's last week.
It's the agenda we just looked at before, before we start. It looks like this. There it is.
Okay, thank you. All right, we are now going to go to vote on our applications, let me just inform you that it's only the first, it's the first three items and the last item. The other ones are being continued, and the text amendments for Silver Lane are being continued, the zone change in the apartments are being continued till next month, and the text amendment for the cannabis is also being continued next month. So what we have is the Platypus amendments, and we have the Honeycomb Church. Can we take these out of order?
Move that we take them out, and do the Honey's Church first?
Second, everybody?
Second.
Okay, so we're going to take it out of order, we're going to take the 435 Honey Spot Road Church first. Anybody want to discuss?
Motion to approve?
Anybody second that?
I'll second that, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0. Thank you, guys. Okay, the next one we're going to go to is the text amendments on, for Platypus Partners. I ask you to look at the document that we have in front of us, which is lost in my pile of documents. Yeah, that's what I'm looking for, it's got to be here somewhere. Here it is, here it is. Okay, everybody noticed, this was printed out by Jay today for us, this is the, one of the two, well, actually, all three of them are here, that we are going to need to vote on. Shall we discuss it before we even talk about it?
Move that we approve it for discussion?
You're approving it for discussion?
Discussion, yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Everybody has gotten this, I hope, we don't need to read it, right? Everybody understands what's there. Essentially, we're looking, it will have an effect, impact on all of our waterfront zoning with this change, that's the only caveat that I would like to make sure that we are clear about.
It's also with the understanding that they have to come before us.
Yes.
They can't just, because we approved, if we approve this, they can't just say, well, I'm going to buy a 100-by-100 lot on Huntington Road and put a food truck...
These are all special case approvals.
Correct, so everyone would have to be...
So still, in that sense, it's no different than this. Jay? This is a special case. And it would have to be a WF zone. Yes, it's limited to our waterfront zone, and it's a special case.
I meant that 100-by-100 would be on a waterfront zone, Jay.
And it's seasonal.
Oh, let me just insert something here that I didn't do, the record petitions heard this evening were advertised in the Connecticut Post July 16th and July 19th.
Are you ready?
Yes.
What's that?
Okay.
What we're looking at is a text amendment, I understand, there aren't that many WF zones anyway in Stratford, but...
There are 30.
There's 30, okay, but they have to come to us for approval. Looking at this situation, it's a different situation due to the proximity of a restaurant across the street and property across the street, okay? I understand that there was some pullback on, as well as, it was 50-50, some people were in favor of it, but my feeling is, if we approve this, given the opportunity, we've already taken away most of the summer, so the people in Lordship won't have to, if they don't like it, have to live with it all summer. It's the end of July, if we approve this and approve the next two items, by the time he gets his role, and it's going to probably be mid-August, so he'll have August, probably September, and then he's going to be done, then he's got to come back to us in February. If 200 people show up here and aren't in favor of it, then we don't renew it. I just feel that as a business owner, we should, I mean, I was totally opposed to in the beginning, obviously, but the more I thought about it, why not give him the opportunity? I'm not worried about the text amendment change, because it'll be special case, and we have to approve them anyway. People just can't come popping in here or putting food trucks in anywhere. So that's my feeling, and I understand that we do have to make the text amendment change, but almost everything we do in this town, we have to make a text amendment change. So I would be in favor of making the text amendment change along with the food truck and the liquor permit, which I can't do right now, because we haven't approved, if we do approve the text amendment.
Mr. Francis?
Actually, he actually expressed a lot of my concern, I mean, a lot of my feelings also, and I sat and talked to a lot of people, not just in Lordship, it's because, you know, this is a pretty big decision, some, like he said, it's about 50-50, and a lot of people were like, listen, we don't have that many places to eat in Stratford, we don't have that many options, when are you guys going to start bringing some places here that are different, different things that we can do? So the more and more I've heard of that, then I actually, actually thought about your comment too about, it's, hey, listen, it's July, there are stipulations that, you know, they have to, he has to come back in front of us, and if there's multiple complaints or there's issues that arise during these few months, we know it's not a good idea for maybe approving it in the future, but as a business owner and as him, you know, presenting some good... for maybe approving it in the future, but as a business owner and as him, you know, presenting some good ideas, um, even though, you know, communication-wise, I don't have to approve the way he communicates, but the way that he presented this opportunity for maybe other vendors, if, if I'm correct, right? He's gonna have other vendors, and he's just not going to have, his food truck is gonna be multiple different kind of vendors, correct? Was that?
We don't have that in writing.
We don't have that in writing?
We only have.
That was my.
We have four food trucks.
Four food trucks, not necessarily supporting local vendors.
We don't have anything more than that, in terms of what the information we have.
Well, I would hope that he would have that, um, you know, implemented in, in what he's trying to do, um, because that would actually bring more support. Um, but, I think with the text amendments involved, and then, and the case that he has to definitely come back and see us again. And if there are any issues, we would have to deal with that then, but I think in the past, we put in place something. And I don't think any big complaints came through, so I also would probably be in a positive about, about letting this go through.
Deborah?
But I'd like the, uh, the commission. Sorry. I'd like the, um, the commissions, you know, the, the conditions of approval that we discussed to be added to, um, any approvals.
I don't disagree with you at all.
Okay.
Anything else?
Um, I, I, I think that, you know, a lot of what has been said so far, um, shows, you know, thought and reason. And, um, you know, but I, one of the things that I'm concerned about is the, um, changing nature of the request. And, and we wanna provide more dining opportunities for, for people in Stratford, because they want, you know, they want us to bring more, more things in. But my initial understanding of what this proposal was, was that there was gonna be a food truck park, where there were gonna be food trucks, and, you know, I was gonna be able to ride my bike down there, and I was gonna go up, you know, walk up to a food truck any day of the week, and I was gonna be able to get something from the food truck. Um, you know, we've since amended that to having ticketed events. Um, you know, which then to me starts talking about, like, okay, so now we're having a dedicated ticketed event on this site, and people are gonna come to this ticketed event. And then, that throws out the window, the fact that you have a half-hour visit to a food truck, uh, as opposed to if you were in a restaurant. So then we have all these cars coming into a already congested area. And, you know, where are we gonna put those people? So, so, um, you, you, so, so it, to me, it, it's, uh, it just sort of, um, it raises an issue of concern for me, because, um, when, when, when you have the ability to do these things on this site, I don't know how we can make that a condition, uh, of approval. You know, if, if, if they can, if they have approval to have the food trucks, and then they have approval to provide, uh, I don't know, a food truck is open Monday through Fri-, or Monday through Sunday, or every day of the week. Um, and then, on certain days, it's not, because it's, there's a ticketed item or a ticketed event. Um, it seems to me like that's gonna require, you know, you're gonna go there, and you're gonna be there longer. You're gonna need to park your car somewhere close by and be there longer. Um, and, and that, that, that issue still hasn't gone away. You know, that issue of where we're gonna put all the cars for everybody who wants to be down there, you know? That's, that's, that's still a major concern that I haven't been able to figure out. Um, but again, I would encourage, you know, all of the conditions that, that we've been provided with from, from Jay. We even have conditions from, uh, planning. And I think any consideration of approving this should be, all of those, all of those conditions should have to be, um, included. And I would even suggest that, uh, for number eight, where it says, hours of operation for live entertainment. It should only be acoustic, non-amplified music. Right, so that we don't run into that, you know, we have, you know, we don't get complaints, formal complaints, right? We haven't gotten any formal complaints, but we have had people say that when they have issues with the noise, they call the restaurant directly. And they, and they speak to them. So it's not like they go through official channels, or call the police, or, 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 you know, the noise ordinance people. But they, they, they do have concerns about the, the sound, the, the, the volume of the music. So if it's acoustic and non-amplified, hopefully, that could, that could address that issue. That's all I have off the top of my head right now.
Mr. Chairman, just to address Mr. Viglai's concern, obviously, what Jay did, if we pass the text amendment, would be included if we approved two and three, in its entirety. And this is pretty restrictive, actually.
Well, it, well, I, I think that it should be one through seven and one through five.
Say that again.
Both of those groups should be, that's what I would suggest.
One through seven and what?
What's it, one through seven and one through four?
One through seven and one through four.
Oh, oh.
From Jay, yeah. Correct.
Yes, with a couple modifications from what I, I could see in it.
Okay.
I also think that, at some point, we, we don't have this really as a text. The only thing we have is a modified version of Barry Knott's talking points. That we should include that with the document. Because that's the only thing we have from them currently as to what their plans are.
So they, so they, you're saying that, um, all of Jay's recommendations and the other, uh, well, planning and zoning, all of the planned zoning, all those are not in there? Right, no, I'm saying they're not in the proposal for the amendments that, uh, Mr. Knott submitted. But we can vote those into that, into that, into that approval. Correct?
Yeah, the only thing that, going in right now, is the, the text amendment
Right, we have to.
that you saw.
We have to prove that first.
None of the.
Right, no, I'm just asking, so, I mean, they didn't preliminary, like, uh, say that they were going to abide by Jay's recommendations?
Well, they have to.
But they have to.
That they're.
We're gonna say to them. We want you to, we want you to take your revised document that you gave us, and we want you to take the, our planning and zoning administrator's comments that he pulled from all the things that we had discussed over the last two months. We want you to take those suggestions and incorporate those into your plans for the future. And we also want you to take what you can of the waterfront commission, who gave a negative vote. So theoretically, one of the things as zoning, we have to look towards what the waterfront commission did. They said, don't do the project. The reason, one of the reasons they did was, they don't wanna cut access to the general public. Not the general public who's going to the restaurant, the food court, but the general public who's on point no point, that we don't wanna use up every bit of the capacity for the general public who coming to a public beach, which is right there. So I think that, if we can just simply take one of their comments and say that this business needs to remain very aware that it's not all about them, there's also a public component that they need to be aware of, in terms of making sure that, you know.
All right, I was, I was just trying to make sure they didn't try to address that into the amendment before they got here. That's all I wanted to know.
I'm sorry, say one more time?
I just wanted to make sure they didn't address that, because, I mean, these comments have been here. So I just wanted to make sure they didn't submit anything saying,
No, they didn't.
We're, we're going to abide by everything in here, and then, and Jay's recommendation, as well as we are doing this.
What Jay did in his, in his statement, he incorporated a lot of what they said they would do.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, and, and they don't have to, and honestly, the applicant doesn't have to agree with the conditions that you put in. If, if it gets there, I mean, they, there's a mechanism for them to appeal if they don't like your conditions, but that's separate. You, you can condition, you know, as long as it's within reason. But I just wanted to add that, while I think you could discuss all the applications globally, you've got the text amendment, you've got the special case, you've got the liquor in the coastal site plan review. You can talk about them all now, but folk, also, we have to vote on them all separately. And that this first part, what's open, is the text amendment only, so I think it's important that you, that you do. You may not be able to get to the approval. If you can't sort out whether or not you think the text amendments are gonna work, the rest of the stuff all fails, right? So, but, so you can discuss it all now, knowing that, all right, if we can get the text amendment, if you can get the text amendment the way you feel comfortable, then you can work on those next, those next pieces, so. Um, the only, the recommendation that I have for this text amendment is that the, the, and it's on the first page of some of the handouts that I gave, which was amended section eight point two point two point two. And this directly relates to what the waterfront harbor management commission mentioned in their letter, was that they were uncomfortable with this rental of kayaks and paddle boards out of this site, because there's no lifeguards and there's an undertow there. We would just strike that entire section right there, out of the text amendment, eliminate that. Because the sunscreens, the sunscreens, all that other stuff can be done, uh, really, out of the hotel, and you don't have to cross the street to go get it. So, you know, I, I, I think that the kayak rental, the paddle boats, the beach chairs, the towels, the umbrellas, the sun lotion, the kites, the bicycles should be removed, if that's what the commission is considering, with the yoga classes, the movie nights, and the yoga, yoga open air markets, which you all have already approved for the calendar year, those stay. Assuming that's what you want. Maybe you don't want those, I don't know. But that's what I heard at the last meeting, um, so. Other than that, I don't see any other conditions that were discussed that need to be removed out of this text. If it's, if it's the, to pass.
Okay. Just this text.
That's it. That's the text amendment that was submitted and filed in the town clerk's office. That's the one you're voting, you're voting.
I have to withdraw your second for discussion. All right, shut it off. I'm gonna withdraw my motion for discussion. Second?
Second.
And now make a motion to accept the text amendment as presented with the elimination of eight point two point two point two.
That's two, that's two votes, though, that we're doing here, correct, Jay?
We're gonna be doing four total votes, the text amendment,
Right.
the special case.
There's two text amendments, though.
Well, there, it's one applic-, it's
So, okay.
Multiple sections, correct. I see what you're saying, Mr. Chairman.
So if we're voting just on this page, which includes two major, two major changes. One, allowing waterfront into the, uh, restaurant permits and cafe permits.
That's the second half of what's been amended, has been proposed. One for the use, the second part is whether or not that use is allowed to have liquor.
So these are two separate votes?
You can densify what's happening. One, one is to allow the use, the second is to allow the liquor.
You're talking after the text amendment is approved?
That's, that's a part of this text.
Right, but then we have to go to the food trucks and the liquor are separate, two separate votes?
That's correct.
Okay, but once we approve this, we move on to that?
That's correct.
So again, I make a motion, we approve the text amendment, with the exception of eight point two point two point two, that be removed?
Second, anybody? Do we need to discuss? Jim?
Well, yeah, all right, so just to go back, Len, so eight point two point two point two. Right, um, seasonal sale or rentals of kayaks, paddle boats, beach chairs, towels, umbrellas, suntan lotion, kites, bicycles. Right, so that's all listed there, but then it also says yoga classes, movie nights, open air markets are similar. Right, so now that part, we approved last year, and that has been, those activities, as far as I know, had been going on, right? That, that all went on last year successfully. And we gave them approval to continue to do that. Are you saying, like, if you strike, you're, do you wanna strike all of that, or just?
I'm just striking the eight point two, which retail services, that was considered to be passed. Beach chairs, towels, umbrellas, suntan lotion, bikes. Yeah. We got a yoga class, it's included in that.
Yeah, and so, so it's the retail component that we wanna get rid of, the rental, the rentals of the retail is what we wanted to get rid of.
Right.
Right. So the recommendation made by the waterfront.
And.
And it's your determination as, I'm sorry.
I'm speaking on, without the microphone on. And it's your determination whether or not you feel the yoga class and the, the movie night and the open air market can stay. You've already approved it administratively through the year, and it's now, you can determine whether or not, yeah, that's worked well, or no, that hasn't, that goes with the bikes.
If I could, if I can.
You're gonna remove that from the text amendment, still approve the yoga.
You would just keep it in. You would just keep that in here. You, you would remove the, the retail components of.
May I change? Lenny, may I change what you have here? If we simply delete? Well, let me first say it, and then, if, if it sounds something. Delete, including the seasonal sale or rental of kayaks, paddle boats, beach chairs, towels, umbrellas, suntan lotion, kites. Or, well, maybe kites could stay, but essentially, those are all the waterfront.
So you're making it to be accepted over that?
No, to, to eliminate all of that and hold on to the rest of it. Right, bicycles, yoga, movie, da-da-da-da, which is everything that they have now. I wanna make an amendment that we alter eight two two two, um, saying retail and service establishments, including the seasonal sale or rental of.
Uh, here, Harold, you would, no, you wouldn't want, you would wanna make an amendment to keep the bicycles, yoga classes. He already took everything out.
I, yeah, I wanna keep retail or service establishments, uh, including the seasonal sale or rental of, and then pick up with bicycles.
Bicycles.
Yeah. And that's everything that they have currently. So that's essentially, that covers what we already said to them, we.
Is that an amendment?
Yes.
Amendment accepted.
Who, who seconded it?
Is that enough?
I'll second.
Okay.
Second.
Any more discussion? Jim? Deborah? Jay?
I would just remind the commission that as they vote, whether they vote in the affirmative or the negative, uh, to rely on the, whether or not they feel the application for text amendment is consistent or inconsistent with the town of Stratford's plan of conservation and development, that's how you should be basing your decision. In addition to the incidental conversation that we're, that you're having.
I, I, I look at the coastal regulations that Stratford is under, which is managed by our waterfront commission. And it is not consistent with what a coastal waterfront use. But it's my understanding that the town can override that. If the town decides it's consistent, then there is state law that would support that. But if you look at, strictly at the regulations, this is not what the regulations say that we should be doing with our coastal, with our waterfront. We should not be having non-waterfront dependent usage. So, uh, food trucks and cocktails are not waterfront dependent. Doesn't mean we can't decide to do it. So what we would have to put down is that it's not totally consistent with the state regulations, but it is consistent with our P O C D in terms of building. The what?
So I provided my, my staff comments, as well as the staff comments for the, from the planning commission, and their commentary on consistency with the plan of conservation and development. Through, first, the planning commission, uh, gave a favorable recommendation for the adoption of the text amendment due to its consistency of the plan of conservation and development. And that's what I would hang my hat on. The planning commission, and they are the shepherds of the plan of conservation and development. So therefore, they're the ones who are giving you the recommendation as to whether or not it's consistent.
And what are they saying, Jay?
Uh, in the staff comments that I've provided, uh, the additional copies, it's the last page. uh, on June twentieth, they gave a favorable recommendation five zero, with the reason being, it's consistent with the waterfront redevelopment goals and objectives of the plan of conservation and development.
So can we, so can we do another amend, amendment, or does he have to re?
All you're doing, all you're doing is giving your reason why you are making your motion.
Alright, so you got it, right?
I have, yeah.
So, reason why, discussion.
And the planning commission.
It's consistent with the waterfront redevelopment goals and objectives of the P O C D, does that work? Okay. It's part of my motion, original motion, second. Need a second?
Uh, second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four zero, I mean, four one, Jim? Abstain, no. So it's four one. Now, this vote requires at least four votes in order to move forward, because it's a special, it's a special case. So, so far, we're moving forward, but let's continue. What else do we have next, then?
Well, now we have to move on to the, uh, No, we gotta do beach drive, food truck and liquor permit.
No.
No.
No, no.
No, no, no.
Yeah, food truck and
Liquor permit, right, 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 right. Alright, well, I'll move that we allow food truck park.
We have to do all these conditions.
When, when do we do these conditions? Now, right?
So, so the conditions that you want So the conditions that were Yeah, because some of those were ours that we gave to him. So you could say, as, as, as presented in the memorandum, uh, dated July, July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.
I move that we accept the
Accept, hold on, hold on.
Okay, go ahead.
So there were two additional conditions that I added, number fourteen and fifteen, that were additional restrictions that I came up with that were not discussed.
So I can go items one.
Additional consideration, so you may determine, hey, we don't want to hear number, we, we like fourteen, we want to add that, which is the applicant shall return to the zoning commission to renew their permit to operate the use of the food truck park site each January. The commission will base their decision, uh, to approve or deny the use for the year based on the business's compliance with the above conditions, town code, and any valid violations. Sounds like, based on the discussion I heard tonight, you certainly
Yeah, we want to come back, yes.
And then number fifteen, which was live entertainment is allowed no more than two days a week, once between Monday and Thursday, and once between Friday and Saturday. Sounds like maybe you don't want that, and that you only want to add that it has to be acoustic for the first year, until you figure out what's happening.
Well, I
I don't know. So those were, those were additional.
Honestly, I think that we should take number fifteen and fold it into number eight. Just simply revise number eight and include this in number eight.
Why, why don't you just use number eight?
Because one's for live entertainment, one's for private events.
Well, fifteen Fifteen wasn't discussed. Says no more than two days, right, so if the numbers are number three, it's
Fifteen, right.
Yep. Fifteen say you don't have two days. Once between Monday and
Right. So you would swap tho, either swap those two out, or you would eliminate number fifteen
That's what I'm saying.
Limited to acoustic only.
The hours of operation for acoustic entertainment should
Eliminate fifteen and add acoustic to number eight?
Yeah.
Acoustic, non-amplified live entertainment.
Yes.
Eliminate fifteen and add Acoustic, non-amplified.
Should we do this again?
I have a question, though, for Jay, or maybe for our lawyer. On number fourteen, each January, the applicant shall return to the zoning commission to renew their permit to operate the use of a food truck park at the site. Can that also include their liquor license? Yeah, but the state's going to look to us, if we don't, if we say they're not state's going to look to us, is, are they forming
Yeah, I don't think we can revoke
So, so, you know, I'll, I'll give my, I'll speak for myself. I think that if you're rescinding the use of the food truck park, you can't have liquor without the primary use, which allows the liquor permit. So you rescind the use, the liquor permit's gone. And, and that's my opinion, Attorney Sullivan may have a differing
No, I, I think that's right. I mean, what you're doing is from liquor's perspective, you're giving a location for the liquor. And in general, you'd be doing a package store, you'd be doing a restaurant, you'd be doing, you'd be saying that that location was appropriate. If you no longer have food trucks, then, you know, you, you're not going to have liquor in the parking lot, so.
Reading all state law, even, even in other state laws towards liquor and food trucks, there's not a lot there, but there is some. What I see where there's not any law right now yet is, we're not talking about a building. We're not talking about a traditional restaurant, or a, or a patio connected to a restaurant. We're talking about a, a facility that has no physical space. So, I, I just want to make sure that we're
Well, I'm not, that's a decision for liquor to make, you know, so
The, Connecticut, you mean?
Right.
And they will, that will be a part of their determination.
I can go in and get a permit for somebody to have a location for a package store, but that still has to go to the state, for the state to say, yes, you can have a package store there. So you need a location permit, and you need the state permit. So, if you're saying, as far as Stratford's concerned, you'll give them a location permit for food trucks on that parking lot, it's still up to the state to say whether they're entitled to have a liquor permit for that. It's a location permit that you're doing on the local level. If they don't have a location permit, they can't get the state permit.
The only thing we could do here is say, we could say no, no liquor, I, I assume, at this point right now.
Well, if you, if you don't say anything, they can't have liquor, because until you, you have to approve a location for liquor.
That's correct. The state of Connecticut, you don't get, you don't get to, you don't even get the conversation with liquor, the Department of Liquor Control
Until we give
Till they, they have local approval.
Okay.
So you're not giving them their liquor license. You're giving them their appro, you, you're considering giving them their approval of liquor location, which then allows them to talk about it with the state of Connecticut, to get their liquor license. So, that's the distinction. You're basically allowing them to talk, you're considering allowing them to talk with liquor control.
I'm going to withdraw my original motion, so I could make another one. Well, we made changes, I'm not going to just withdraw. No, I made a motion on the food truck. Right, that's, I'm withdrawing it.
Okay, the whole thing.
The whole thing.
Okay.
I'm going to make a motion now that we approve the food trucks, but I'm going to also include in that that we eliminate number fifteen in the number eight. Jim, what is it you wanted to add? You wanted to add acoustic, acoustic music? Only acoustic, non-amplified music be added to number eight? We didn't got these. I got them. Don't forget, we're only doing the food truck now.
No, he didn't. But Jay is saying it doesn't matter, because ultimately
Doesn't he have this in here?
Putting liquor into this No, because once we give them the site, then they're going to go to Connecticut Liquor Authority and say, we have a site here for food trucks, that we want to have liquor. And then Connecticut's going to say whether they can do it or not. We have a motion?
I made a motion, but do you, how are we going to affect the tax, do we really have to add that? Jay, would we really have to add your recommendations here about the tax, the emission of noise, light, smoke, odor, gas, dust, something like
All those are, those aren't conditions of approval. Those are the criteria that you need to evaluate when you're approving or denying special case.
But it doesn't have to be
That's just laying out how you're supposed to be evaluating.
Okay, alright, so, I made a motion including Jim's suggestion. Need a second?
Second, anybody? Deborah, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Jim? No. Four one. Okay, what's next? The liquor. Now, where do we find that? In here? We don't have a text for that, do we? So approval of liquor location. In conjunction with a special case application, the petitioner is also seeking to establish a Class D restaurant liquor permit for the food truck park. This permit will allow for sale and consumption of beer, wine, and spirits to patrons on site. The commission should inquire with the applicant how they intend to manage the sale and consumption of alcohol. The applicant should also explain current laws regarding where alcohol may be consumed, and how they will prevent alcohol from being consumed in public spaces, meaning streets, sidewalks, seawall, and the beach. Assuming best practice protocols are in place, the sale of alcohol is a customary incidental service to the restaurant industry. Yes, sir.
So I think one of the conditions that is directly related to this portion of the application was, uh, that was discussed at the public hearing, and this was included in your, in the special case, was that there should be no, uh, to-go liquor sales. So that one, if you could be, to be, that is number twelve. You could include it in this one, I mean, it may redundant, but it's clear, it's clear. That one is directly related to the applicant's liquor, um, and, and, and that would be the one condition that I would recommend as part of this.
I'm also reading in state, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So, I would recommend that you attach number twelve and number fourteen. So there shall be no liquor to go, no liquor to go sales, and number fourteen, each January, the applicant shall return to the zoning commission to renew their permit. The applicant, the commission will base their decision, uh, to approve or deny the use for the year based on the business's compliance with the above conditions, uh, town code, or other valid violations.
Yep. Eleven should also be there.
Alright, so I, I motion to approve, um, the, the liquor permit for the site, um, with the addition to, uh, number eleven, twelve, and fourteen of Jay's recommendations of that, uh, to prevent, for eleven, to prevent alcohol from leaving the site, um, in a fenced area, a fenced alcohol consumption area lined with a forty-eight doom fence. Number twelve will be, there shall be no liquor to go sales. And number fourteen, each January, the applicant shall return to the zoning commissioner to renew the permit. Dated seven eighteen, twenty twenty-three.
Could I also make one comment?
Um, also, I'd like to, uh, add that the approval, uh, would also add the recommendations for all the various town staffs that was identified um, in Jay's documentations dated May tenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Well, you, you had to say something, right?
I just wanted to, I, in reading up on state, on laws, um, when you have outdoor essentially like beer gardens, patios, and all of that, which is what this kind of fits into, although there is no restaurant that's connected to, you have, most cases, there are places where you can say that you will not have a bar service. So you, you basically will have table service, and you'll have the stand-up area, but you won't have an open bar, which we would be within our rights to say that we don't want to see you do this. Because it would take the focus off of it, if liquor is supposed to be secondary. It's supposed to be something that you have with your meal, not coming in just to have a drink. That, if you don't have an open bar, it makes it harder to have, to come in just to have an open drink.
So you mean like, uh, just having a bar on site?
Right.
Rather than getting it from the truck, or?
Right, you get the drink from the truck and you go sit at the picnic table.
Right, right. I mean, so if you like to make an amendment to say that there will be no standing bar, you would have to get your alcoholic beverage from the truck, and add that to the amendment?
I, I, I would love to do that. There's law that's beginning to say that, in terms of, um, I can't say for sure, but even I think in Connecticut law, there's a little mention of that, particularly when it comes to like beer gardens and that, but, yes.
So what I'm hearing is that maybe you would want to add a, a, another condition that says there shall be no consumer bar, one where, you know, seats and a thing where people can go sit around.
That is what I
There shall be no consumer bar prohibited, uh, permitted at the site. So, someone could walk up, this is what you are, this is what you are allowing. Someone walks up to the truck that serves beer, or wine, or, or alcohol. You order your drink, you take, pay for it, and you go back and sit down. You cannot sit physically at the bar, at a bar.
Well, it's going to be a truck, so, basically, it's not going to be a bar.
No, there's a section that is going to be fenced off, according to code. There will be a section fenced off for people who want to drink.
Right.
So basically, what we're kind of saying is, we're not going to allow you to have a bar in the midst of all of that, also.
Do you want me to add that amendment, or are you going to add that amendment?
Add that.
Alright, so with my
You already made the motion.
Alright.
What do you want me to add?
There should be no
Amendment to Mister, what you Francis's motion, that there'll be no standing bar, no, there won't be a bar, consumer bar period. But there can still be picnic tables, obviously. You don't want to get rid of them, do you?
They have to have that. Have to have seating for twenty-five people, at least.
I, I accept Mister Petroselli's amendment to, uh, my approval, uh, with the no consumer bar prohibited on site. With no consumer bar per, on site.
The what? No, 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 uh, we have to vote. All in favor? Do we need to vote by time, name for these? Does it matter? As long as we have four. A second? Sorry, I'm I was having a drink on the beach. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So it's four one? Okay, next on our list. Yeah, the only thing.
Accessory?
Thank you, folks.
Have we covered all of?
We did the church first, so that's it.
We did the church, we did this. What else do we have?
The accessory apartment.
The next item on the agenda is 435 Honey Spot Road application.
We did that, we did that first.
So, we're on to the minutes, sorry.
I'm glad to see you missed something, Jay, that's great.
Just to clarify, if people in Lordship also should have peace and quiet on August-
Okay, next item. Excuse me, sorry, sorry, you don't have the floor.
Thank you.
Approval of minutes.
Approval of the minutes. Deborah?
Motion to approve?
Second, someone?
Second.
We're approving the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero, okay. Next, we have Cam, I believe, correct?
Chairman, so the first item on the agenda is 24 Washington Parkway. We received some feedback from the Waterfront Harbor Management Commission, who had given an unfavorable recommendation for the proposed use, which has been approved already this evening. The, the only consequence to that is that the coastal site plan review requires four votes in the affirmative, as opposed to the typical three. So, we didn't receive any feedback from DEEP, which we refer our coastal site plan review to. However, I just will share that in a similar, in this, a similar food truck application over at Brown's Marina, when they had the food truck, DEEP recommended a series of storm contingency plans, recommendations. The applicant came in originally to research doing what they wanted to do tonight. They, they received a copy of that storm contingency plan, and they just added it into the text amendment, which you all approved. So, I think I would be, I would, I feel comfortable with having no additional conditions because they're essentially already included in the text amendment, which I can just quickly go over for you. They are, "All vehicles located in any such food truck park shall be highway, road-ready, fully licensed with plates, and have inflated tires so as to be able to move within a designated number of hours when a significant storm event is anticipated." Next, "All chairs, tables, and other movable objects shall be located inside or off-site so as to avoid any flying debris during such significant storm event." And lastly, "The specific site plan details, including dumpster, porta potty, location, if any, construction details, and storm contingency plan for all waterfront business district zoned uses, as permitted herein, shall be approved by the town of Stratford's floodplain administrator as a condition precedent to zoning special case approval." So, I think there is more than enough within the actual zoning regulations to where you don't have to do anything else other than vote for, on this application with no conditions.
But, Jay, could we, the, the waterfront harbor document, who voted essentially against this negatively on this project, they made several recommendations about that we should be concerned about potential noise anticipated with outdoor entertainment, including amplified music. Could we simply include in our statement that we have addressed that?
I think that's certainly fair to say that, you know, this, you know, as one of the reasons for your, if you decide to approve, what reason number one would be, the issue for noise concerns was addressed by condition number eight, which says, "There shall be no, there shall only be acoustic non-amplified live entertainment on-site," and I'll essentially just cut and paste from that language. I think that's fair.
I mean, they make several points that they pull out of their objectives and policies for harbor management that we have addressed in many ways. They're looking to limit the impact of this project on the local residential neighborhood, which we've already done, we've, we've set, we've spoken about the light, lighting, we've spoken about hours of operation, we've spoken about the noise. So, those are three major things that they listed as what their reason for a negative vote. So, at best, if we could have a simple statement that we could add it to this, that we could send on back to them, and also the very fact that we convinced them to exclude the kayaks and all of the waterfront usage materials that they were bringing to us. They totally dropped all of that out of their proposal, which was one of their, one of the waterfront's major difficulties with the project to begin with. They didn't want to see that expand right there.
No, I think definitely, we should definitely add in our statement that we addressed some of the coastal waterfront committee's issues with the, the noise, the lighting, and as well as the, the retail sales and rentals of kayaks, pedal bolts, just so, so there's a clear focal point of, of some of the stuff that other people were, had a problem with, or issue with.
You have that? Okay. Do we need to vote on that, someone? Any discussion? Jim, do you want to add anything to that?
No, I was just going to make a motion to approve.
Someone second? Second, Lenny? All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero, correct? Okay. Jay?
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the coastal site plan review for 105 Beacon Point Road. The only item that we were waiting for from, the commission was prepared to vote last month on this application regarding the perimeter flood protection project at the WPCF facility. We were, the engineering department was waiting for a determination from the Inland Wetlands Commission. I received an email from the conservation super, environmental conservation superintendent on July 25, 2023. Dear Jay, at the July 19, 2023, meeting of the Inland Wetlands Commission, the commission approved a conditional permit for the WPCF perimeter flood protection project. I will be unable to issue the permit until next week, as I have some scheduled time off, and she's going to send me the official letter to keep in the file when she returns from her vacation. So, essentially, the one item we were waiting for, which was wetlands approval, they have approved it. So, my recommendation is that the commission tonight approve this very, 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 very important project to protect the town from coastal hazards that currently threaten the town.
So moved. I want to do this one. I move that we accept this project, particularly given its critical need in the town of Stratford. You've done all of them tonight. Ah, give me one. I'll withdraw my motion so that your motion counts. Okay, good. All in favor?
And I'll, I'll second-
Oh, a second. Jim is sec, seconding. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. What else do we have? I think that's it then, all right?
So-
Oh, accessory apartment.
The 724 Honey Spot Road, that item has been continued with the special case and text amendment application to August 23rd.
Otherwise, we're done?
We have got one more number, one more item on the agenda, two more items on the agenda. Correct. So, for accessory apartments, we've got an application for an accessory apartment at 835 Huntington Road. Prior to this application, as most accessory apartments, they needed variances, and that's why you all were working on this ADU regulation to hopefully try to make it easier for some of these folks to get their accessory dwelling units without spending $5,000 on surveys and go into the zoning board of appeals, just like this applicant has. So, anyways, the applicant received their, received their variances for the rear setback requirement, therefore, the project essentially complies with the town's regulations because they've been granted relief for their in-law apartment. I have no concerns regarding the proposed position of the accessory apartment, and I recommend it for approval.
Discussion? So moved, I'll move it. Second? No, 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 this is yours.
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion?
Yeah, Jay, I just have one. So, I, I know this particular house sits off the street, and it's included-
Correct, it's a rear lot.
So, do they have to go to like, you know, you know, notice to all the neighbors that they're going to do this, like they would for any other, because it's a, it's not just like it's within the existing footprint?
They did, and so we have the certificates of mailing right here verifying that they, they sent letters to all the abutters. And I'm glad you brought up that it's a rear lot, because it's, because it's a rear lot, the setbacks are essentially one and a half times what they would normally be. So, if this was a regular lot and not a rear lot, it would comply and wouldn't have needed variances. But because it's a rear lot, you have to be one and a half times further than what you normally would.
I learned something tonight. Thank you. Any more discussion?
Seeing no more discussion, I make a motion to approve 835 Huntington Road accessory apartment application.
Second?
No, no, we just, we were just, we weren't there yet.
You just want to get out of here. Seconded.
So, we were discussing.
But we haven't voted.
All right, so now we got-
We just need to vote.
Fair enough. I got my question answered, sorry.
We just need to vote, sorry.
Sorry. No, no, that's why you're taking notes.
I, I'm, my apologies. Go ahead.
Now, we got to vote.
We got to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. One more. Of course, I, I can't find my agenda, so I have no idea what's next.
That's correct. So, the last item, and I'll just quickly explain it, it's the erosion and sediment control application for the 105 Beacon Point Road. That's the coastal flood protection for WPCF. The town engineer has approved the erosion and sediment control plan and endorses it. My only recommendation is our standard conditions of approval for any erosion and sediment controls, which are, "The all necessary siltation and erosion controls shall be in place, and the zoning enforcement officer notified for inspection prior to any site work and construction being performed." Number two, "Immediate onsite modifications shall be employed when an erosion problem develops." And lastly, "In evaluating this application, the commission has relied on information provided by the applicant, and if such information subsequently proves to be inaccurate or incomplete, this approval may be modified, suspended, or rescinded." So, I recommend those three conditions of approval.
And this is all part of the, the dike around the WPCA?
That's correct.
May I add one other thing?
Sure.
Could- I'd like to add one other thing, if we can, to this. It's my, it's the greenway that's going right through there. Just that we can make a simple statement about that particular attention should be paid to minimizing the disruption to the greenway, making sure that it's restored as quickly as possible. Since we just spent $6 million, which just got funded for the greenway on Main Street, now the connecting, the connecting section going down to Short Beach is going to be disrupted totally, so I want to try to get that whole 10-mile- minimize the disruption to the existing greenway that runs through there.
Most to approve?
And Jay's?
And Jay's.
Second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's it? You got that one, Lenny. Oh, oh, sorry. What?
If there are any, any zoning complaints that anyone knows about that, that has for us, you can always reach out. No need to discuss here tonight, unless you have something, you can always reach out to us, and we're happy to help. What I wanted to hear was if there was any feedback regarding the zoning regulations project update with our consultant, Robert Collins, who was here last month. Sorry, I wasn't available, I was on the beach here fishing somewhere in Cape Cod, so, sorry.
He was chasing shards.
I had to rub it a little bit, sorry. But I'm, you know, we're really excited for the project and the commission's involvement, all the commissioners' involvement, as well as Attorney Sullivan in advising my staff, as well as the applicant, in, you know, making the regulations be predictable and producing the results in projects that we want. So, essentially, developers are following the guidelines of what you all think is appropriate for the town. So, we're looking forward to all your participation, and if you have any other comments that you want to talk about tonight, I'd love to hear them, or send me an email, whatever it happens to be, but- We're next meeting, it's our administrative meeting in September. I think it's September 13, 13th. And the meeting in September 13th, they're going to have basically a large bulk of the modifications that we know have to be done, the baseline kind of study. That'll be ready in September 13th, I think it is. Our next administrative meeting in September.
Jay, is there any way we could have a conference table for this meeting?
Well, you know, I, you know, that's one thing that we were trying to figure out, is how we could best meet while record the meetings in the way that we're, we're expected to do so and get them up on the website. So, you know, I, I was talking with Robert, and we thought that we might be able to either sit at, you all could sit at this table with the consultant, and I'll be back, just kind of watching from, watching, and I think there might be enough room for you all here. The other idea was to move this table and bring in some other, you know, a six-foot fold-out table that might be easier to get around, although it's up to you. We could do it in room 213, I just would have to try to-
There's no microphones.
I, I, I would like to try to take a stab at it here in the bullpen, and if it doesn't work, maybe we, we figure, figure out something else.
Just that, so we're not like, so we can actually have a discussion?
Well, a less informal-
Because that's what they're looking, that's what they're looking for. It's easier for someone to, to sit and speak with you if they're on the other side of the table versus across the room.
And since that's the only item on the, that we will be having on those agendas, when we're talking about the zoning regs, that's it. You all can, you know, we've got the mics down here, and we can sit and have more of an informal conversation, as long as you all- Just one, just one, maybe two, but they will be back, you know, I think Robert, who's really the project lead, will be down with you all, and then maybe myself, and Nina, and Attorney Sullivan, or whoever else is here, can kind of sit and watch. I mean, we're three feet away, I mean. As long as you are all acceptable to that, we can, I'll, I'll prepare to have this area kind of cleared out a little bit for some more space to work. I hope so, I hope so, you know, and it depends what it looks like, you know, it may not be as kind of nuts and bolts, like we're changing this section, we're changing this section. I think what it might be more of is, you know, your section 11.2, it's no longer legal and inconsistent, that one's got to change. I, I still have some more detail, and I'll let you know what it'll say, but I hope that we have, my every intention that we have the documents in hand, you know, a week or so ahead of time for you guys to look at. No, we actually spent two hours today working on the design of the website, as well as a, a one-minute-long promotional video that the mayor will be narrating, our chairman will be narrating a little portion of it, and as well as the planning commission chairman will be narrating a slight portion of it as well, for social media, for promotions, to try to get people to come out, let people know the project is happening. for promotions, to try to get people to come out, let people know the project is happening. So, yeah, we're working on the, the project's website and the promotional video as we speak. I hope it's up in the next week or two.
Is it Robert, or Robert?
Robert.
Robert said he would, he was thinking about using the ADU text as a working project for us. And when we, when he, when he was here. So who knows, that might be, that might be too political, but he was considering that for us, since we've already spent time with it.
And so any additional feedback that, that you all have as members of the community advisory committee for this project, just please feel free to reach out and just see, see the remain, rest of your commissioners, and, yeah, thanks for all, thanks for your help.
Thank you. Hey, someone?
Mr. Chairman, seeing no other items before the commission, I make a motion to adjourn.
You could second it. All in favor?
Aye.